We have, this is a joint work session of the City Commission and the Planning Commission, and we really have one topic this evening, and that is to talk about our local aspirations and deal with the candidate areas that have been designated on the maps around Oregon City and figure out what our response is going to be. Since we have four of us who sit on the land use committees, the urban and rural reserve committees, we need to know how to represent Oregon City's views. So, let's first of all go around the table for identification on the minutes.
Dr. Dugan? Dr. Dugan, City Commission, I also serve on the rural and urban reserve policy advisor committee of the County Commission.
Tim Powell, Planning Commission.
Jim Nacita, City Commission, and alternate on the Urban and Rural Reserves Commission of Metro.
Carter Stein, Planning Commission.
Chris Gruner, Planning Commission.
Daphne West, City Commission, and alternate on the urban and rural reserves for the county.
Tony Conkle, Oregon City Staff.
Pete Walker, Oregon City Staff.
Dan Rutwell, Planning Director.
Sirey Patterson, City Manager.
Nancy Krachman, Public Board.
Rocky Smith, City Commission.
Alice Norris, Mayor, and I'm from the Regional Urban and Rural Reserves Committee. And back behind Nancy, you're over there.
Nancy, I'd say to you, Carter.
Colin Meyer, Oregon. I lost it then.
You lost it then? Okay. So, we have a short time this evening to dig into this, and Dan has come prepared to walk us through the areas in which we need to make decisions.
Please, everyone, I'm sure is aware of what we do have to do by about 6:45 or something.
Right. So, we likely can come to conclusions on that, or we can have another meeting about it if we need to.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mayor. One of the reasons we wanted to get together with you all at this point is because as part of the urban reserve project, the county has made some initial recommendations for the whole metro area, including Oregon City. And those recommendations, I think I pointed out before, they're on the maps behind you. The one on the right, which is the, right above Rocky, is the, sort of, the orange gold color. Those are the proposed urban reserves. And then above the mayor, in the yellow, you have the rural reserves.
And the lime green.
Okay, lime green.
Or yellow, whatever.
And one thing I wanted to point out is if you look back on that urban reserve, you look at Washington County, that light green color, you can see they've been a lot more aggressive in identifying a larger area. And the reason for that is, these are candidate areas, so just because they're on the map doesn't mean they're going to be urban or rural. It means they're going to be studied to see if they make sense to be urban or rural. So, part of my and our staff's concern is that we don't limit the analysis too tightly, and that's why when we go through the staff recommendations for these areas, which we have on this large map here, I'll go through that later, you can see that in some areas we actually increased the area that we think should be at least analyzed for urban. And again, I'll go through those a little bit. I want to talk briefly about your packet. You have a number of map exhibits, and I think I'll just go through these briefly because it gives a little background on how we got where we are today. The first map shows the five-mile buffer.
How come I don't have this?
We don't all have maps.
Okay.
How was it? How was it?
Pardon?
We got ours up there.
I've got an extra one.
Here's an extra.
Are these any different than up here?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll work on it, Chris.
Did you get?
Is this a packet?
It was a packet that was supposedly sent. It was email. It was email.
And it's got copies received. We can go make copies of maps if you want. I'm okay. No.
So, the first.
Did that happen? We're sharing. Oh, here.
I'll share with Rocky. Okay. So, the first map is the five-mile buffer of the UGB. So, when Metro started this process, this was the universe that they thought should be analyzed for urban and rural reserves.
And remember, it's 50 years.
50-year time period. And the other thing to remember is that you don't have to be designated urban or rural. You can just be either. And if you're not designated urban or rural, that means that in the future you may be, but it doesn't put that label on your property. The other thing to remember also, if you have the rural designation, that is supposed to be a permanent designation. So, you know, if you're rural, don't ever think about bringing that into the UGB or annexing a property. So, it's important to remember that.
And I think it's important to remember that that third category, the undesignated category, which doesn't have a name, the zoning stays the same.
Right.
So, can urban and rural share?
Well, yeah. At this point, you'll see that a lot of the counties have been designated both, which means, and this is, again, candidate area, so they'll be analyzed for rural and they'll be analyzed for urban. And through that process, it may come out one or the other, or it may come out undesigned.
It has to be one of the three.
And when you say that process, is that simply a legislative process up and through Metro, or does that include scientific study as well, or yes and yes?
Yes and yes. We'll get into that a little bit. I mean, the process has been going on for a few months, and there are, if you look, we'll go through it in a little bit, but there are eight legislative factors that you have to make findings before you can be designated urban. And what we attempted to do is to go through those eight factors in these different areas that I'll go through on the map. It's our best shot at seeing if we need the factors. The next map is, again, it's just a little more detailed map showing the study area and the different jurisdictions in the metro area. Exhibit three, and this map is actually against the wall under the clock behind Commissioner Nacita. That is the, one of the, one of the factors that go into determining whether an area should be urban and rural, and that is the Department of Agriculture map that designates into three classifications the land's value for in terms of both forestry and agriculture. This is, again, one of the important factors.
And are those largely just soil?
It has a number of factors. Soil type is one. The proximity to existing urban development is another, and the parceling size. So, if you have a, you know, a bunch of half-acre properties right next to the city boundary, the chances of that being good for agriculture are pretty slim.
Much to my advantage. Remember, it used to be only by soil types.
Right.
So, this is part of the change in difference.
Yeah, so it's really a more thorough, I think, analysis of that.
Daphne has a question.
Conflicted, I can kind of understand what that is. What's the difference between the important and, it's important to agriculture or the foundation is, what's the difference between important and foundation?
It's the foundation is those lands that are best for agriculture.
The best.
And you can see that those are the areas that should probably be rural and not urban for the most part. Then the next category down is the important, and then that blue-purple color is conflicted. And you'll see that there's a lot of those not-so-valuable ag lands on the east and south of Oregon City. And that's one of the reasons that Metro's been looking at Oregon City as a possible urban.
So conflicted is just less-than-desirable ag? It's not necessarily less, or ag that's adjacent to an urban boundary?
There are other factors, like you said, the soil types, natural resources, availability of water for irrigation, things like that.
Do you know specifically in the areas adjacent to Oregon City and Clackamas Heights, south of Beaver Creek, why that is considered conflicted?
It's, again, those same factors.
In the ag study that's on the metro page, which we've been referring to at meeting after meeting, when you go there, it appears that the majority reason, though, is parcelization, that there's a lot, all the factors exist, but there's been so much encroachment in that area of Clackamas County.
By development, sometimes at urban levels.
The change in priority from prime agriculture to not only prime agriculture, but lot size and proximity to urban areas, was that a legislative action that took place at the state level, or was that a metro policy decision? And when was that decision?
When was the Department of Agriculture decision? And I don't think it was legislative.
No, it was a metro decision that we would use, wasn't it?
It was a metro decision.
It was produced by Jim Johnson's group. It was, I think, an ag.
Yeah, it was a Department of Agriculture study.
Yeah, but we decided.
But it had not been implemented.
No, but we decided to use.
But Metro decided to use it as a factor, and that's legislative.
What was the economic value of a farm considered in applying one of these three classifications to an area? I'm specifically thinking of the Sears Farm that's up near Clackamas Heights. It's a pretty large area of ground, and they've got a lot of greenhouses, and it's productive every year.
There was some market factor in there. I don't know exactly how it was measured, but you can find out.
Yeah, and nurseries are measured largely not on soil type, because you don't even need soil to be a viable nursery these days. It's a slab of concrete. Not necessarily.
Okay, the next map, I would just say, forget about it.
Oh, Doug, you got a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I want to make a comment. There's rural-urban reserve designation, but there will probably be lands that are not present, so you're not going to have just the two.
That's true. The next map didn't turn out as we had hoped. That's the rural zoning in Clackamas County, and without a road system on there, it's not much help.
A lot of trees.
Yeah.
Lots of labels.
The next one is the Oregon Department of Forestry. This is the existing land use in terms of different forest types. And again, if you look at Oregon City, you can see that there, the area south of Oregon City between Highway 213 and Beaver Creek Road is, doesn't have a lot in terms of forestry. And then there's also an area just east of Oregon City Golf Course and further north up to Thirrell Road that also does not have a lot in terms of forest resources. Exhibit six, this is another map that Metro put together and is one of those criteria that were a legislative criteria.
Dan?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, before you move forward, can I go back to that exhibit five? Just west of 213, there's a patch there that seems to be wildland forest budding right up to our southern city limits.
That's true, yes. And a lot of that's rock-parian area.
Wow.
That's the bluff.
Steep slopes also.
That's the bluff on.
Right. Central Point Road.
Beaver Creek.
Yeah, that's the area where the Johnson's property is, that has been coming to our meeting.
And you'll see that when we go through our recommendations, we're not recommending that area be considered for urban. That's one of the reasons.
Part of it's the green spaces. Metro protected green space along the.
No, no.
It's actually just because of.
They're talking the south side. All the blank down by Leland, where Leland comes out.
Well, the bluff is a little more along the river.
Is this Metro? No. I didn't think.
Okay, exhibit six is one of the more important maps. Again, this is one that Metro put together, and through the legislation, it is one of the factors. And it's called Natural Landscape Features. It has a lot to do with habitat connections, remnant oak forest, and then water as a resource as it relates to drinking water, portable water. So, again, if you look at the map and you look in the area around Oregon City, it's a little hard to make out, but if you can find Beaver Creek and 213, which is just to the left of that number nine on the map.
You mean to my bar left?
If you're looking at the map, it would be to your left.
You're looking at it the right way.
But you can see that there's, when it comes to this natural landscape features, which, again, relates to forestry cover and steep slopes, you'll see a lot of the area, and a lot of that area in Clackamas Heights, just directly east of the city. And also an area south of that area, we're just talking about Central Point, the drainage creek, the drainage of Beaver Creek. A lot of those areas show up as a natural feature. And there is a gap south of Henrisie and.
Just Henrisie here?
And east of the Beaver Creek Road, you see nothing shows up in there, and that's actually the Beaver Creek hamlet area.
Ah, okay.
The little orange dot there?
Just below the number nine.
Oh, okay.
Dan, what are the numbers on here? Are they labeled as natural features?
Metro has a list that has names for these areas, and that's what it refers to.
Oh, okay.
Exhibit seven is, again, a three-tiered classification system in terms of ability to provide sewer. And this is really a pretty simple factor. If an area comes out high for sewer suitability, it just means that you don't have pump stations. The gravity flows into a sewage treatment plant. And that's the reason that you see most of this Clackamas Height area, east of, on the east side of Oregon City, showing up as high because generally it slopes towards the treatment plant. I think we found out, though, in that whole Park Place area, that because there are so many valleys, that there's some areas you still will need pump stations. So, this is a pretty gross measure, but that's the reason that area showed up a little higher than the area south of the city, where you get into slopes, different drainage ways that flow to the south and not to a treatment plant.
They also have New Creek Canyon designated, and that could be an easy place to put, well, we're not going to drain into the canyon, so that seems like an odd.
I guess you could, I mean, it eventually gets down to the sewer treatment plant, but.
On the fear matter of flow.
But it's where would you put the line?
Right, that's probably what it is.
I don't think we'd want to just drain into New Creek.
And we did that.
Adjacency, yeah.
The next map, exhibit eight, is water suitability. And I really don't know how they came up with this map, but the area that shows up as the highest suitability for water is, again, that Beaver Creek area.
Hi, is any served?
Okay.
Yeah.
It's all on Clackamas River Water.
Because it's already being served, so there are pipes there, and that's part of the designation?
Okay. And then, see, exhibit nine and 10, we've already talked about, those are the maps up on the exhibits. I think exhibit 11 is in here again because I wanted to demonstrate the difference between Washington County versus Multnomah and Clackamas County. And again, that green shows those urban areas, and you can see Washington County has a pretty huge area that they're looking at for candidate areas. And then exhibit 12 is a composite, is a composite of a number of factors. This has the agriculture factors again, with an overlay of the rural, the proposed rural candidate areas, which are in the crosshatch areas. And then exhibit 13, your last exhibit, is a composite of both water and sewer. And you can see that, again, Clackamas, the Clackamas Heights area came out high for sewer, and that the Beaver Creek area came out lower for sewer but high for water.
And the Clackamas Heights area came out low for water? Is that what that's showing us?
Well, it came out high for both water and sewer on this. It's that tan, dark tan color.
So, that's, so that area means.
Water and sewer, okay.
Yeah, that's combined water and sewer. And then the green shades are split, high in one and low in the other.
Dan, so the composite candidate that's overlaid there, that means on the orange, what's that mean then?
The crosshatch?
Yeah.
Those are the areas that Clackamas County have preliminary designated as urban.
As urban?
Yeah.
So, the candidate area.
Urban candidate area.
Okay.
But the crosshatch, okay, but this crosshatch area in here, though, is designated as both suitable for water and sewer. That's what you're saying?
The orange one.
It depends what color under. Yeah, you have to look at the base color.
Well, I know, I see that for sewer, but you said water also, so I'm not sure how you're telling that it's also good for water.
Orange.
Well, the graph says it is water and sewer serviceability.
But then if you look at the two shades of green, you have two opposing.
Oh, they combine.
It's sort of like a geography 101 quiz.
Yeah.
Map reading.
Map reading 101, yeah.
I mean, part of the reason is that I wanted to make sure that you understand that a lot of these decisions aren't arbitrary. There's actually some information that's supposed to go into this decision. Now, the other, the next thing I wanted to talk about was this two-sheet piece of paper that says candidate areas on it. And.
This is something you worked on?
This is something we worked on.
Since it is.
Everybody else was doing it, so we thought we could.
Finally, we're getting so far behind. We need to do something.
So, what I'm going to do is go to the, to the big map back here as I go through these different areas. And what, what we've attempted to do was to compare the county's initial recommendation. Again, that's not final.
The microphone.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that was my bad, sorry. My gentleman.
So, what we wanted to do was compare the county's recommended urban reserve areas with what we as a staff have recommended. And the first area on this sheet is, it is Refuge Area A.
Oh.
That's the southwest area of Oregon City, so that's basically everything from 99E on the south side over to Highway 213. So, and I wish we did a little better job on the colors, but the county proposed areas basically this area in white-blue. And what we, we pretty much agreed with that area, at least initially, to take a look at, but we also added this area in purple, which is the area just north of this creek, that Beaver Creek. There's a major watershed area. We decided to use that as a delineation. So, that's the one area that we looked at. The next area is Area B, which is everything east of 213, and also includes Beaver Creek. The county did a really, a relatively small area in here, again, in the light-blue, and we expanded it by, I think it's 3,000 or 4,000 acres in terms of at least looking at it. And again, the reason we did that is because this area actually came out better on several of the factors. If you remember those maps we went through, this came, this had fewer of the natural landscape factors. In terms of transportation, it had a better potential for connectivity because you have both Beaver Creek and Highway 213. And you have a couple of existing roads, you have Caris Road, you have Beaver Creek Road, that connect the two areas. So, I mean, it's not the greatest situation, but I think the connectivity here is better than it is up in Clackamas Heights or in this drainage area down here by the golf course, Oregon City Golf Course.
Wait, wait, that's the golf course on the left there?
This is 213, in the Stone Creek.
Oh, Stone Creek, I got, no, no, okay, got it.
So, what was the county's reason for leaving Beaver Creek out?
You know, I asked them that, and they've said they weren't sure.
I know.
But I think there's a real.
Let's see, dido.
And my response to the county was, before we even get out of the gate, let's not get too political. Let's look, let's look at the factors, let's start with, you know, a reasonable area, and then we'll let the politics do what they do. And I think maybe the county's going to be agreeable to that.
And Daphne?
So, the bottom dotted line there, is that Henrisie?
No, that's Caris Road.
Caris Road.
Henrisie is right here.
Henrisie, oh, wow, that, okay, that's ways out, isn't it? And then as the goes over to the left, is that following, no, that's your right.
Oh, here?
No, the other dotted line on the bottom, where's.
There you go.
Oh, is that what it is? Thank you.
This is Caris right here.
So, it's all Caris, even all the way to the, no!
This turns into a watershed line. This is a creek.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And again, if you look at the topography and you look at the cover, forest cover, it's generally a bit more flatter and is less covered than a lot of these other areas. So, it's another reason we thought it made some sense.
Doug?
I'll save the political thing for our next meeting, because I think we really need one. I mean, we're going to be out of here by 6:45, we have discussions. I'm a little bit surprised by your decision in the area between 213 and the Willamette River, because it was, in fact, the staff's recommendation, yeah, all that area.
This?
Yeah. It was the staff's recommendation when Metro came to us for an urban growth expansion, they, the executive director of Metro, they had an executive director who was like at that point, had us coming down almost all the way down South End Road for the extension of our urban growth boundary.
Right.
The staff argued strongly against it because it'd be very hard to serve it in terms of sewer. Now, you're taking that whole area, there's a big drop-off off that ridge that currently defines Oregon City down. And so, there's, there's a big gravity difference there. You also have that border area where you do have those wildland forests that some have, set an opportunity to see some of that property, went to the Watson's property. Great, great wildland forest there. And then that area is so far different in elevation, so I'm surprised you're even looking at more than the county's looking at.
Well, actually, the only difference is this area in here.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm surprised you're happy with the counties. I'm surprised you're happy with the counties, and then you're even making it larger than the counties.
Well, I think, you know, of all the areas, I think it is the least viable.
Okay.
But again, this is a candidate area, and I think it's worth at least going through the process. If it should be kicked out, it should be kicked out. The other thing we did, if you see these lighter tan areas, those are the areas where we could get gravity flow. This is still in plateau.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And so, we designated those areas as a first priority to look at.
That's fine.
Daphne?
Dan, will you help me on the left side there, where Canema is and where South End and more central, it's 99, Central Point?
Yeah, this is Canema.
No, no.
The Canema was.
Portland North. You got to get on our city boundaries.
Yeah, there we go. But this is similar topography as the Canema. This is our urban growth boundary, South End Road, like, flows like this.
And that's Central Point?
Central Point is.
Oh, that's.
South End going down to New Era.
Okay, yeah, New Era, that, so the dotted line is New Era 99?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's, hmm.
I was just going to say to you about, because when we, when we did the UGB expansion request, it was to extend down there, and I think one of the other concerns there was that just the economy of scale, putting in a pump station for such little property versus how much property you'd be able to serve here with the public infrastructure investment. It makes more sense, I mean, because that's exactly what we did talk about, was that that south border line along where that drop-off was, was a concern.
Would you agree, you want to finish on this topic, this is on the same topic?
This is for how many years?
Yeah, yeah, that is.
This is a 20-year look.
This is a 50-year.
Well, this is what I.
And it's also, we can see very different changes in technology in how we treat water, so.
I think, however, that I'd like you to review one, one thing. I mean, we, we, your statistic that you showed at the last meeting showed that we actually do not need to expand our urban growth boundary for 20 years. So, we're talking the 20 to 30, and so essentially, you know, we wouldn't be recommending anything if it were just a 20-year expansion, correct?
Correct.
And that's really where we are in the statistical stuff. So, it's, imagine beyond that what the population will be, and I think that's why we're having this discussion.
Right. We actually ran the numbers that, and we assumed a 1.5% annual growth rate.
Right.
All the way to that 50-year time period, which would be 2060, and we came up with, we needed space for another 22,000 people.
So, that's, I just want to reiterate, that's the way everybody kind of remembers what we're looking at.
That's just for Oregon City.
And that could be another city, too.
It could be.
Government city.
When the. When the, we had the urban growth expansion, it was taking in the, the area that currently went in, staff actually recommended the urban growth expansion extend beyond Henracy Road, that is, south of Henracy Road. Impact killed that. But your argument, and I see it, it seems like an argument is occurring on the south end, is we do an expansion up to, up to the, the stream or the river, that, that goes, it looks like it goes up to Beaver Creek, Paracreek. I don't understand the logic of that either, if you want, if you're concerned about how the urban growth is going to affect a watershed, you either take in the whole watershed or you don't. You don't go, you don't go up to the river or halfway through the watershed. I, I don't think that makes any sense.
You're talking about this area in here?
Yep. That doesn't make any sense. You either don't do it, you don't go into the watershed, or you take it all in.
If we did.
Here's what, why?
Why? Because, because, because you're, you're doing an urban, you're doing an urban, urban planning into the, into a watershed, and so you've got rural issues on one side, and you've got urban issues on the other. And I think they're gonna conflict, I really think they're gonna.
Well, you have one where you just do watershed extends outside you, you know, like Evernathy. So I'm just, you have that conflict, and I'm not arguing at all, I'm just, I'm just in the conversation.
It's a little bit different on Evernathy because actually our urban growth boundary goes on both sides of it.
I see that part of you.
Yeah, it goes on both sides of it.
Okay, so if we expand, and you haven't done the, well, why don't you go ahead and do the third area?
So, the third area. Clackamas Heights, we, we sort of went through the same process. We, we looked at two possible areas. One is this tan area where, you know, we could, we could, we could do it maybe without putting in a whole new highway system. If you look at the county's recommendation, which is all of this area, I think the issue is, is connectivity and how you serve it with transportation. And we have all these barriers to the north, that is the Clackamas River, and no way to connect, I mean, this is a big area. This could hold, you know, 20, 30,000 people at urban densities. And to take all these people and throw it on Holcomb Road or, you know, it just, it just doesn't work, so. So, our feeling with the.
They all go across the Carver Bridge.
Carver Bridge, or a new bridge all the way up to, to 212. I mean, so, and so that's why, this is an area where I think it's a double or nothing. You either go for it and get the development that you need to help pay for that huge infrastructure cost, or you, or there's not a lot in there.
And we're just gonna say, we went all the way to the east there, because that's the only road down to Clackamas River Drive. There's nothing else between there, there's no other way down to Clackamas River Drive until you hit Forsyth.
So.
Your all or nothing, I'll go to the all, it looks like you extended it on the all, two purple above, is that, is that right?
Yeah, we did, all the way to Clackamas Drive.
Okay, look. That whole area was closed for three or four months because of slides. That cannot possibly serve as an urban connector.
Yeah, we didn't.
I think it would be a mistake even considering.
He's, we're green.
Yeah, well, he, but they sent the purple area for a study area, I don't, I don't think we should even go beyond the county's recommendation on that.
Well, I think, well, my feeling was is that if we take a look at it and then, you know, start with the big picture, then pull it back. Because again, I think we need to look at all the potential develop, developable area in here. If, if this is an area we want to go.
I would guess that drainage, the purple area is all draining directly into Clackamas, the blue area is draining into the Evernathy. It's a different drainage system altogether. I think that purple area is a completely different drainage area, that all goes in the.
This, this area here, yeah.
It all goes into Clackamas, I don't think you should even, even think about it.
Dan, can you hit some streets and some of the roads there on that top right, so I know where everything's at there?
Okay, well, this is Hatton Road. This is the Carver Bridge.
Okay.
This is Bradley. And then Forsyth is up here. And Holcomb is right here. Yeah, here's Redland right here.
So Bradley, Forsyth, and then what's the, what did you say that goes to the Carver Bridge there, what's that road?
It's called Hatton.
Okay.
I, I've always thought that, that if there needed to be urban development up there, that that would be a perfect place for a small, new rural village. I'm not sure that, I mean, it's, we've struggled over making Holcomb area, the Park Place area feel connected to the, the rest of the city, and I think the problem would be, imagine trying to make the Park Place River Drive, residents of that area feel connected to, to, but so far away.
Right, that's why, you know, when we went through this analysis, it kept bringing us back to the Beaver Creek area.
So if, if, I don't want to quote it on this, saying our poll may just be full of it. If all of this area were to get off the urban densities, then how many people could, what, how many, could those blue areas accommodate?
You're talking about all of this?
AB and C.
Well, you'd over double the size of the city. So you, you could be, yeah, 60, 70,000 people.
So it's way bigger than.
But there's so many steep slopes, I don't think you could get them all in the steep slopes.
Which will be eliminated as we study it.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's again, the idea of the candidate areas is to go through that exercise. Is that, you know, if we say we want to look at this for a candidate area, the next step is to go through and see how productive it could be.
To give you those numbers.
Yeah, to give you the numbers, you take out the slopes, you take out the forest cover and.
Originally, I have, in my mind, I've been thinking we should really look at a way, way smaller area, because it's not practical to think that, that we want to bring in that much poverty. However, I think I've changed, I think I've changed my mind that because we're going to be looking long term, I mean, past 50 years, your, your grandchildren and mine are going to be having the same conversation, and that to provide data at this point, I think will be very difficult to have. So that we can say, well, we looked at, you know, in 2017, we could say, you know, we looked at that, that area just isn't easy to serve because of AB and C.
It doesn't matter, build a very high C and hotels to go home.
Yeah, yeah, see, that's what I'm thinking, that a hot new city is way better than.
The, the, the other nice thing about this is that if you go through the urban analysis, some of these areas, it may just throw them right out.
Yeah, and go through, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, that, that it may throw them out, or it may, or it may create possibilities or, or something, and it gives us data to use, because as I said originally, I was thinking this is way too much, but I'm, I think I've changed my mind when I'm here, seeing what other cities are doing as well, that it should be analyzed, it should be on the record. Doug?
I'll deal with one of the political issues, I think it needs to be clear in anything we do here that if some of these areas become urbanized, particularly those that have tremendous sense of community of their own, not attached to Oregon City, that we may not be the jurisdiction that urbanizes them. And so I think it's one way to deal with perhaps the potential for the. But.
You mean, I, you're talking about Bee Creek?
Well, that, that's, that's the political one.
Oh, yes, Dido.
Well, that's the way the county threw that out, there's no, that's, that's the one that's gotta handle the, within our.
That's right.
They might choose to do so.
That's right, but that's, that's my point, that's my point.
Yes.
We, we have to look, we have to look at it from the standpoint that Oregon City may not be the jurisdiction that deals.
So that's no problem.
And one of the factors is governance.
I, I'm going to come back, however, to counter somewhat Alice's statement. If our intent is to make our current areas greater urban density, and that's one of the things that's gonna talk about, it'd impact a great deal. I don't, I don't think we necessarily have to consider a big area if our focus is going to be concentrated on increased density. I think we can look at a smaller area for a 50-year period.
We could.
We could, and, and I think my understanding is from, from you, within the area that is currently in the city boundaries and our current urban growth areas, that we could have a capacity of up, up, of about 45,000, wasn't that correct?
Yeah.
That's, that's 50% larger than we are now, essentially. We're about 30, we're about 30. And part of it, I think, is a view of how, how, does this city wanna be the equivalent of Beaverton or Hillsborough or something like that in terms of size? You know, I think, I think in terms of, in terms of our aspirations coming into play here, that's what we're talking about, the city's aspirations, I think we also need to think about how big a place do we wanna be? Frankly, many of those areas, in terms of them coming into Oregon City, I've mentioned this on several occasions when we've had special levies coming forward that failed, you see, the old precincts could vote for them, the new ones would vote against them. The sense of place of Oregon City is gonna dissipate the larger it gets, and that's already happening.
So, I just wanna, I, I, I agree to some extent, but I don't think this is the point in the process that we take that off the table, and I don't, I think it doesn't behoove us, once we have made decisions, to take, and then we look back over our shoulder and wonder if maybe some other areas could have better served us. And having taken them off early in the process and early in the stage, I don't think is, is necessarily prudent. I also think that it could possibly give some more political cover for some areas by being able to, I'd assess various areas against each other, and not, not having studied some of them, you'd lose some of that as well.
I, I guess, I'm just making arguments at this point.
Tim's next.
Well, I, I agree with Chris, I, I think, I think we have to study it, I think it's important that we review all of the areas, and, and, you know, staff said, expand that area, let's, let's look at it. It's not gonna hurt anything to look at it, and as for our aspirations, I mean, this tables, these people, you know, us, our group, you know, we may aspire to one thing, but 20 years from now may be a different aspiration. So, I mean, we need to have the facts, we need to have the data. You know, that, we've not, not done, unfortunately, in the past 20 years, we should have been doing this then, and we wouldn't be in the situation we are today with traffic and, and some of the things we have a problem with. Because quite frankly, if we're looking at traffic, all, all of these should be gone, we shouldn't study any of them. So we, we can't look at that, we, we have to look long term, and we have to ignore all that and just, and plan. I, I'd say, take the area and plan it, at least look at it.
And I want some help with the process. What is the role of the people who actually live in these potential areas in determining whether or not they are included in the study areas for urban or rural reserves?
There's a.
There is.
There's a process that Metro set up, and each of the counties have their own process. But in Clackamas County, they have a, a committee.
So Doug's on.
Doug's on the committee, and there's an equal number of city people as there are the community planning organizations in the county. So Beaver Creek, for example, has a representative on the, on the committee. And so there's that piece of it. The county, really, this is, the county is supposed to be initiating and following through in this process and making a recommendation to a larger regional committee, but they also need some input from the cities.
Okay.
And then there's the public outreach. So they are having, they've had listening, three, I think, this is the third series? Yeah.
There's a series.
They're going right now, they had one, and as we were developing the criteria, had one after candidate areas, and then one.
So both Metro and the county are having open houses on this topic.
I guess my next question would be, we're expanding according to that map beyond where the county has gone in some of these potential study areas?
We're suggesting that they study them, yes.
Okay. When the CPOs weighed in, was that the process by which the county established the more limited areas that were going beyond?
I think it was part of it, but actually, the CPOs had, had formed certain boundaries, and they were modified by the county afterwards. But I'm sure they, they were listening to people that were on the, on the pack, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that, considering what public process there was that considered the people who actually live in those areas, the extent of the potential study areas was more constrained.
That's an assumption.
That's an, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, that's an assumption, there might have been other factors there, there might have been the water, the sewer.
And I think the county recognizes that they need to do a more thorough job of the factors in this, not, not the.
Political.
Not necessarily the political ones, but the legal factors.
It might be good to look at the factors next while we're going into that, because the fact, essentially, the factors have not been applied at least strongly yet, and that's part of the study, is that the factor overlay then happens. So, do you wanna, you wanna go through those now?
Question about the factors, are these two, I mean, who put these out there? Do we have, who, is this law?
It's state law, okay.
Dan, if we're meeting again on this topic, would it be possible to get the information on that other process that went on as far as?
The county process?
Yeah, about what, what, you know, what the various considerations there were when they adopted a more constrained view of things.
Yeah, we, we had, you know, we had Doug here, the planning director from Clackamas County, he went through that a little bit, but I could see if he could come back and.
Is that their final?
No.
No.
It's a work in progress, and this is our opportunity to, to get involved.
It will be to the end of 2010, well, actually, we're supposed, no, I think we're supposed to actually, at the end of this year.
The end of this year, they're, they're trying to nail this down, but.
And then the urban growth boundary is, we have to look at in 2011, but Metro is hoping to have that nailed down by the end of 2010. And, and really, we're considering a pretty tight urban growth boundary for that.
Right, right, they're two, they're two different processes, but they're running at the same time, pretty much.
Yes, go ahead.
Dan, is it the case that Metro's trying to make a decision on candidate areas by the end of the year?
No, no.
Or they're trying to make a decision on, on, what decision?
Well, again, the counties, there's this group that's called the Core Four. That, there's, you know, the counties and Metro, and they need to agree on, on the reserves. And I think they want the candidate areas by the end of the year.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
So there will be, the, the analysis, the studies that we are asking to have done by looking at these expanded areas.
Between, between now and the end of the year.
We're, we're not to ID the actual urban reserves by the end of the year?
Yes.
Yeah, but they still need to do a, a good anal, they, once, they need to take the candidate areas and go through the factors.
That's right, so it's not the candidate areas that have to be established at the end of the year, the decision has to be made.
It's the decision on the urban reserves and the decision on the rural reserves, and if they can't agree.
So the candidate area deadline is somewhere prior.
Soon, soon, very soon.
It's supposed to be by the end of July, I believe.
Right.
So is there a public input or a city input to the, the reserves that are determined subsequent to the candidates being, being finalized?
To the reserves being finalized.
Lake Oswego has already come in, Westland has already made recommendations, Twalton has already made recommendations, we haven't.
Yeah, 'cause it sounds like what, 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 Dan, you're advocating is to look at a lot of stuff that the city's asking, asking the process to look at a lot more land. But there's, there's no further input after, after the studies have been done by this group, right?
By the city?
Does the size apply on it?
Oh, I wouldn't say that.
Oh, no, we're, no, we are, both Doug and I are decision makers on the, on the, on the decision-making committees, and, but.
I'm not a decision maker.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm an advisory group to the Senate County Commission.
Yes, but.
I'm not a decision maker, I think you gotta make that clear.
Okay, that, that's, that's true, the counties are going to take the, their advisory group very seriously in this, and they're also. No, no, these are two different groups, there's.
They're separate committees.
It's confusing.
It's, it is confusing, but the most important, the, the decision make, the people that have to make the decision are the Core Four, the end. But we're all parts of feeding into that, and the, I think, I think it's also becoming very apparent that in almost, in almost all cases that I can see, that local aspirations are very important. And local aspirations aren't just the size outside our urban growth boundary, it's also what we do within our city, you know, how we become the regional center. But I think they're gonna take very seriously what we do and what we say, which is why I've been pushing for a decision for so long.
Just to be clear, though, so it's, it's the Core Four, that being the four counties and Metro.
Yes.
And, and further on top of that, it's consensus, correct?
For those four.
That was my understanding, correct?
Yes, and if they can't agree, no one's really quite sure what they do, but we think we go back to the old way, soil types.
Soil types, which is. Soil types.
I'm going to, I'm going to be, I'm going to be at the extreme on this, because this is an issue of city aspirations. What do we want as Oregon City? What's being recommended here is a large study area. We may not want Oregon City included in it at all. West Lynn and, and, and Lake Oswego say they want minimum expansion of the Stafford Basin. They've already expressed that. That's their aspirations. And the question you've got to really ask in terms of our aspirations is, do we want Oregon City to go into all of this area?
And I think the answer is no. However, I, I've been convinced, though, that I think that we need, like Chris was saying, I think we need data to support it, though, and that, and that I don't think we'll have data without pumping at it.
I absolutely don't want us expanding into all of that.
I don't either.
I just want to know which areas of that are the...
But I, but I think our aspirations has to be clear to that. We may in fact say, well, these areas can, may be urbanizable, but Oregon City doesn't want to be part of it.
But we don't know until we study.
We don't know until we study.
Well, I, I think, I mean, I, I've already given you some opinions of how I feel about it, as a sense of place. That sense of place is disappearing on us now with our current growth. It'll continue to do so. You go into Beaver Creek, and you're going into hostile territory.
Well, I understand, I'm still just threatened by the study of that. It's the next step, that's the real debate, right? For that is, what you do with the studies to set those reserve areas.
Well, what I'm, when we're talking about local aspirations, we're really talking about the aspirations of several people. I'm already talking about mine right now.
The, the other thing...
I don't want to go into hostile territory, and that's what's going to happen. You've got a hamlet, you've got a hamlet in Beaver Creek right now. They've expressed their opinions very, very strongly.
I am very aware of that. I know, and I know where that, that political battle lies ahead, I just, I think we come prepared.
I think that's one of the reasons why we, we as a city want to have that area that Dan, is Area B, I believe, is a part of the study, because that's Beaver Creek's area. And if, if they're going to be a community, and, and they're neighbors to all of us, they have to grow responsibly as well.
That's right. But, but, but what does that have to do with our aspirations in terms of where we want to be?
What it means is that there are resources available to help them plan, and it could be looked at that way as well.
The resources that are available, I hope, do better in terms of what's happening to Massacre.
The other thing, well, look, I'm going to say that.
Daphne first, and then Dan.
I thought, wait, this wasn't a governance issue, because they could expand their hamlet as well, they could do things too. So, I, I don't see this as a political thing.
They're not, they're not a jurisdiction.
Well, they can make one.
Well, they get to designate urban and rural reserves as well, so, Dan.
The thing, you know, talking about local aspirations, that the other reason we like the Beaver Creek area is because it supports one of our existing aspirations, which is the Beaver Creek Concept Plan.
Employment area.
The employment, there's some retail in there, there's prox, well, those kids already go to school at Oregon City High School and Ogden Middle School.
That's Oregon City School District, doesn't have to do with the city of Oregon City. I don't, I don't buy that argument.
No, it's, it's one of the factors, is, is proximity to schools and service to schools. And I'm saying that that area already uses Oregon City schools, and it's close to the college, it's close to the high school, and it's close to the employment areas in the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, so there is some connection with a plan that we've already approved, and I assume is part of our local aspiration, because we approved the plan.
Why don't, why don't we go through the factors, just so we're aware of what, what they are and how they're to be applied?
Yeah, if you look again at that, that handout, there's a, a chart in blue, it's a factors for the designation of urban reserves.
And then there's some verbiage also in the other.
Yeah, actually, the memo I sent to you, it's dated April 23rd, has, also has a list of those, those eight factors. But I think the chart's a little easier to follow. And again, you know, when we did this rating, it was based on what we know about, about the area. It's, wasn't necessarily scientific, but we used it off all the maps, a lot of the maps that I talked about tonight. So, the first factor, if you look at the upper area there, is number one, it can be developed at urban densities, and, which means efficient use of infrastructure and investment. So, again, we wanted, wanted areas that are, don't have a lot of natural features that need to be preserved, relatively flat, easy to develop, and, so when the investment is made in that infrastructure, it can serve a lot of property. Again, that's efficiency.
Welcome.
And so, when we looked at those, Area A, we saw, we thought that those actually would probably be rated pretty low. Doug, this is supporting what you were just talking about earlier, because of the slopes and the watersheds. And both, if we looked at the city's area and the county's area, that we thought that would come out pretty low. Factor number two includes sufficient development capacity to support a healthy economy. So, the first one talked about density, the second one talks about, you know, an area large enough so that if you, if you're going to urbanize it, you have the wherewithal to, to finance infrastructure. And, again, we thought the city, because it was a little larger area, came out a little better medium, and at the counties, because it was smaller, came out a little lower. Factor three, can the area be efficiently and cost-effectively served by public schools and other urban level public facilities? That's what I was just talking about with this Beaver Creek area. But in terms of Area A, again, the access isn't that great, and so we, we thought both of those, both the city and the county areas came out fairly low. Number four, it can be designed to be walkable in a well-connected system with public transit. We thought both those areas came out low in that factor. Five, can be designed to preserve and enhance natural ecological systems, and there's a lot of assumptions that go into that. You know, I, I think Oregon City has a pretty good program for protecting natural resources, but there's really a lot of, I think, a lot to deal with in those areas in terms of steep slopes and wetlands and repairing areas. Number six includes sufficient land suitable for a range of needed housing types. We thought that, you know, if you did good planning in that area, that you could probably get a medium rating on that.
Yeah, I know it.
That's, again, a kind of a hard one to, to determine. Number seven can be developed to preserve important natural features included in urban reserves. We thought that could be medium. And then the last factor can be designed to avoid or minimize adverse effects on farm, forest, natural landscape on nearby rural reserves, and we thought that would came out on medium. The Area B, again, that's the Beaver Creek area, and the, the city area that was more inclusive had a larger area, we thought that came out medium under the first factor, and at the county's area, which was about one-fifth the size, was lower. In terms of sufficient development capacity to support a healthy economy, we thought the city's proposal was medium and the county's low. Factor three, efficiently serve with public schools. We thought the city's proposal was high because of its proximity to the college and high school, and the county was medium. Four can be designed to be walkable and well-connected with public transit. We thought the city one was medium because of its access on 213 and Beaver Creek, and the possible density that, that could be built in the Beaver Creek Concept Plan that could maybe in the future support some transit, and also the fact that that area is relatively flat, and, at least compared to the other areas, we gave that a, a medium and the county a low. Number five can be designed to preserve and enhance, enhance natural ecosystems. We get, we thought both of them could rank high, again, because there were very few of any areas that came up on that map of natural features. Sufficient land suitable for housing types, we thought, a high for the city, medium for the county. Can be developed to preserve important natural landscape features, we thought both were potentially high, and can be designed to avoid adverse effects on the landscape and natural, and the farm and forest areas, we thought those were high also. And then the last area, C, again, that's the Clackamas Heights area. Factor one, we thought the city was medium and the county low, again, because we went for a much larger area, which would allow more opportunities for density. The second factor, we thought, well, let's see, sufficient development capacity to support a healthy economy, we thought those are both low. Efficient provision of services, factor three, we rated them both medium. And you can see that, I won't go through the rest of them, but we rated them pretty, pretty close to the same, actually, in the Clackamas Heights area. So, you know, this is, this is a judgment call, and it's, it's the factors that the county will use once they have candidate areas, and, and I'm hoping they, they get into a lot of detail on these different factors before, before they make their final recommendation in the Core Four. So, that's really quick, but I...
Doug?
Just going to perhaps discuss sub-areas you've already indicated there in the Clackamas Heights, a, I'll call it a tan area, which in fact is areas that you think would be more easily urbanized, and of course, you've, you've got the ridge areas on the, on the southern portion of the city.
Right.
Those, you know, those are one, ones I feel comfortable, very comfortable with. For one thing, the Clackamas Heights area in terms of conduct, in terms of its sense of place, that's where the Bartle Trail comes through, and that same identity that exists for the end of the Oregon Trail exists in that community, very, very protected, was left of the Oregon Trail through there. And so, there, I personally feel a very strong sense that in terms of maybe shared values, they probably would have them, even though when they came in, they were forced to come into the city originally, and they weren't very happy about that. I think there is that commonality that you'll see there, that you're probably not going to see much in any of the other areas, so...
I was just saying, while they do...
Yeah, Magis, while, while we're all thinking about the results, I'd like to bring up one other thing, which I've debated with myself since the city brought in the line in 2002, because the question I keep, Mill Creek Canyon, I think, is one of the great jewels that, that we have, not in the city boundaries. And I, I keep asking those who love it and water protect it as much as I do, where would it have the greatest protection? Would it have, is it protected more in the county, or is it protected more within our city boundaries? And I'm wondering how we make that decision, because I want it protected. Eventually, I want some hiking trails and stuff in it too, but I don't want to see more housing kind of encroaching in that, and I think that in the county, I worry that there's that, that possibility, and so I don't know what we can do about designation. I can't have a rural reserve inside of a city, because I, I think it's actually natural, it's a natural, there's natural resource protections on, on that piece. But what are we doing about Mill Creek Canyon, or, can you give a planner's perspective?
What are the protections on?
It's Metro, most of it's Metro.
Yeah, most of it's somebody Metro.
Well, not most of it.
Green space Metro, or?
No, it's not the majority of it, it's just some of it. I don't think it's even the majority of the acreage yet. It's only like 340, I think it's about 340 acres, isn't it, total?
But, so, that, the majority is Metro green space?
No, that's the green space. 340 acres.
340 acres is Metro green space.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the acreage is...
Well, yeah, there's a accessibility issue there, where who would be more motivated to create accessibility, good accessibility in this way, to even, to someone from, you know, having given the city more motivation, who needs the Metro?
I think it's a...
What are the problems right now, then?
All of them.
There's a lot of people looking after illegal, out of town, and no respect to the Americans.
There aren't built trails.
And it's hard to get in there, it's not a place where...
Biggest issue you may have down there eventually with a bush, when on the perimeter, fire down there.
Yeah, it would be awful.
Okay.
It's just such a beautiful place down in there.
Well, the one, let me, let me express a one concern, and that's this, in terms of, in terms of areas that are natural areas, there are also private property holders, and for some of those people in the past, the, the timber harvest out of that has been an economic incentive to them, that is, that's where they've got some of their income. As long as they're in the county, they can keep harvesting. If we, if we develop regulations that preclude that, we would be taking an economic benefit that they have away, and we're not even going to let them build in there to any degree of density because of these slopes and so forth. So, I think that's one of the issues that you would face, is you take it, and you can protect it as a jewel, all right, but how do you compensate property owners for potential use of that land that they have had in the past? And I, I think that's a bit of a challenge, really, because it's, it's not agricultural land, it can't be urbanized, so what's the economic value of a property holder? One of them is, is his timber harvest.
Hmm.
You have to buy it to protect it.
Right, otherwise they get to harvest it.
Yep. Well, if it comes into the city, you could come up with codes that would preclude the logging, that's my point.
Oh, well, I see. Protect the trees or something.
And then they would have the protection.
But there's that little annexation, little...
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah. Paul, or Carter, did you have?
Yeah, is, is Metro considering green spaces along with these urban and rural reserves? Is that, are green spaces part of the discussion factor in?
Not directly.
No.
But Metro has bought land outside the, near the growth there.
It's a different process.
Lots of areas.
Protection of natural resources is certainly a huge part of this, but green spaces is a different program. There are a lot of parallel tracks, for sure. So, I guess what we need in five minutes, yeah, is what's clear that we're going to meet again.
Yes.
And I think whether we take the, the path the staff is recommending, or the little smaller county recommendation, we still need to meet again, because as the factors are applied and the land becomes shrunk, and we need to determine whether that's acceptable to us. Because I'm expecting it'll be shrunk greatly, aren't you?
Through the process, yeah.
Through the process.
Yeah.
But I'm willing to develop the record, because to me, it's protection of my city, to have that, that record of, of study. And now, who does the study? You'll provide some information, but is this to the county with the mapping and all of those?
The county does the study, yes.
Okay. So...
But I, I wanted to be able, after this meeting, to go to the county and say, you know, I met with my planning commission and my city commission, and they thought that these areas should be reviewed.
Studied. They should be studied.
I don't think you're getting that.
So, is there anyone that's, that's not okay with him doing that? Besides Doug?
I have, I have problems with some of the purple areas, and I, the one that concerns me most, frankly, is I'd like the city to remove that purple area they put adjacent to Clackamas Heights. That all drains into Clackamas, it doesn't drain at all into, into any jurisdiction that we have. We do have drainage into Beaver Creek, we do have drainage into Abernathy Creek, we don't have any drainage into Clackamas.
You know, I, I actually, I would like that conclusion to come, and I expect it will, but I think rather that, that I would prefer to have a study say...
Yes.
...to determine that, because I, I think it's...
I don't think we have to, I think it's clear.
No, but...
You have landslides walked it for three months. You can't urban, you can't put a highway through there, I mean, why even bother?
I agree, but I think we have a stronger argument when the data shows that, rather than just we vote to say that, because that's, one's a political response, and one is a...
No, that's not a political response. It cannot be served urban, as an urban place. That's not a political statement.
Well, why is it? It's not a fact.
I would say it's a fact.
Well...
Well, with the infrastructure, you're right.
Yeah.
We're looking 50 years on.
Yeah, is there anyone else that feels that, that we shouldn't study that right now? Just for study only. Jim?
I generally feel that we should accept the more constrained recommendation of, of the county. That, but that's not something that we make a decision on tonight, is it?
Yes, yes, that's what we're asking.
That's what he's asking.
Yes, we need to ask which of the study areas.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would prefer to go with what the county developed.
Let me make a couple points on, on that recommendation. I saw that area, and I saw, well, look, 213, and I'm thinking about Oregon City, well, that, that's a real logical place to extend. Probably employment land, Mulholland's looking at employment land to the north of them, where they look at, and employment lands to the south, there's a corridor that, that is already[1750.32] There's a corridor that is already there that serves us. I think that's, I think that's an excellent area for consideration. In terms of the aspirations, I cannot argue at all that Beaver Creek has a potential urbanization. But I think at one point or another, if that comes into the study and so forth, our aspirations should have a statement to the effect that that should be looked at as the potential of becoming an independent city if it is urbanized, and Oregon City does not necessarily have any interest in urbanizing it. And so, from a study aspect, I guess I don't really object to Beaver Creek, but I do object to it from the standpoint of it being, it being governed by the city of Oregon City. I think all we'll have is a hornet's nest. I frankly have serious problems with that whole area south of, south of our ridge there. It's highly constrained. Of course, your studies indicate it. Almost everything you list there is medium and low. But my statement, still, I'm not sure I feel as strongly as Jim does in terms of holding to the county piece, but I feel very, very strongly about that northern segment there along the Clackamas River. It makes no sense to me. I think it ends up being undesignedated because it has no agricultural value, but I think it has no urban value anyway, either.
Yeah, I agree, but I'd sure like to see the study data support that. So, I hear two concerns. Are there any other concerns about that?
Are we making a decision now and not coming for another meeting?
No, we're making a decision on studying candidate areas right now. Now, the next meeting, we'll be looking at...
Is this something we do by ourselves?
Are we making a recommendation to the county that the city agrees with these candidate areas, because I think we need another meeting? I think we need a meeting.
That's what he's asking for, yes.
And I'm not willing to support it.
When are you going to the county, Dan?
Tomorrow.
But do you have to report?
I don't have to, but later...
Let me just ask. What will another meeting give us we don't have tonight? On this...
Well, probably not much.
Yeah. I think, it seems to me that the value of the next meeting is that we have more information and hopefully we're straight.
And then we can, yeah, then we can, I mean, this is the beginning of the top of the funnel.
What I'd like to do at the next meeting is, once the county's done the analysis of these areas, then we can come back again and talk about it.
Carve it out.
Yeah.
For the debate over the final reserve.
I don't know if this was stated, if it was. I've heard it so many times that if I heard, I probably ignored it. All four counties, all three counties and Metro have to agree to...
We just said it four times tonight, that would be safe.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Right, Doug.
We have to say it here seven times, I think.
Gosh.
Any other questions about the process? I mean, it's, we're, it's been going on almost a year, actually. And my next meeting is May 13th. And when's yours? It's next week.
Yeah, it's, oh, no, it's this week.
Is it?
It's the fifth, in this case, it's the fifth Thursday. I always saw it as the fourth Thursday, it's the fifth Thursday.
Oh, it's tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay. So, those are, if you want more information, go to those. The websites are wonderful. You can also give citizen input, and you can also see other citizens' input on the websites. So, they're, Metro's trying to do a good job of information collecting, and with the multiple levels, we're all going to, bazillion meetings on these topics. We're also doing transportation alongside of this, so Regional Transportation Plan.
High速passing?
High速passing Plan. We're all going crazy with the plans, but I think this was an excellent meeting, and we, I appreciate the staff bringing it to us in this forum, and we'll be meeting around the table again. And I think it would be great, in my view, to have this be joined through the process